The February 21st, 2023 session of the Anarone County Council is called to order. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. Ms. Fiedler will lead the invocation.
If you please stand. Please pray with me in a manner consistent with your faith while I pray in a manner consistent with mine. As we gather here today as members of this council, we pray that we are ever mindful of our great responsibility to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community. May we keep in mind always the enduring values of life exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build upon with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better community and county. Amen. Pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission
All right, we will now open our invitation to the audience. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Mr. Chair, we did not receive anything ahead of time.
And we did not have anyone sign up ahead of time to speak. Is there anyone in this audience who now wishes to speak? Please come up to the table and state your name, address, and your topic before making your remarks. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. So if anything not on the agenda for this evening, please come up to the table and we will allow you to speak against those topics. Wow, that's a first. Seeing no movement, the invitation to the audience is now closed. Is there any council member or any item any council member would like to place on the All right. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendments to a bill, a resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved, Radveen.
All right, second, I heard already, and then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of February 6th, 2023.
The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 7:00 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Mr. Volkey and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
So may I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 6th, 2023?
So moved, Radveen.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. The minutes of February 6th, 2023 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number 1223, an ordinance concerning conveyance of surplus property, improved county-owned property, part of the Dorsey Run Road right-of-way in Annapolis Junction, Maryland. Bill number 1323, an ordinance concerning licenses and registrations, special events, permitting. Bill number 1423, an ordinance concerning general provisions, fair housing, denial of rental application, notice. Bill number 1523, an ordinance concerning zoning, residential districts, business complexes as a conditional use.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution number 223, resolution approving the determination of certain improved county-owned property known as 100 Summit Avenue in Glen Burnie, Maryland as surplus property.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 223.
Bill number 223, an ordinance concerning private disposition of surplus real property, approval of terms and conditions, Overly Drive in Severna Park, Maryland.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the county council. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the table is Ms. Harold from Central Services, Mr. Bakier from DPW, and Ms. Nederer from, oh no, Ms. Kenny from the Office of Law. Need to check who's here first. As y'all will recall, we discussed this bill at the previous work session and was heard at the council on February 6th where it was amended to make some technical changes and delay the settlement date under the agreement of sale at the purchaser's request. If y'all will remember our discussion from before, this is a follow-up to Resolution 1122, which approved the surplus designation for a .058 acre county-owned property located on the north side of Overly Drive in Severna Park. The surplus process is a multi-step process, so we are here at the final step. To provide a bit of background about the property, it is a portion of a larger lot on which a house is currently being built. The house being built is significantly encroaching on a county right-of-way and a stop work order has been put in place. Upon title review, it was revealed that the county and a private party have competing ownership claims to that .058 acre portion of the property. This bill, along with Resolution 1122, are steps to resolve the cloud on the title by conveying that portion of the parcel to whatever extent the county has an ownership claim to the private party. As part of the agreement of sale for the county stake in the property, the final conveyance of the county-owned portion is contingent upon the developer removing any portion of the structure encroaching on the right-of-way. Happy to answer any questions council members may have, and we ask that you pass the bill this evening.
Any comments or questions from?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5, I appreciate you running through the history once more. Mr. Barron is the representative for the 5th District. I ask my colleagues to support this legislation this evening.
Just a point of order. Is there still public hearing on this particular one? Because I know we amended it before. All right, we will now open the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Barron. We will now open the public hearing on bill number 223. Anyone from the audience who would like to speak on bill number 223? All right, seeing no movement there. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony in the online testimony tool in reference to this bill?
We did not receive any testimony, and there was no one that signed up ahead of time either.
Thank you. All right, the public hearing on bill number 223 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 223.
Bill number 223, an ordinance concerning private disposition of surplus real property, approval of terms and conditions, Overly Drive in Severna Park, Maryland.
All right, any comments or questions from council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 223.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard is absent. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Bill number 223 has been passed.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 323.
Bill number 323, an ordinance concerning zoning, small business districts, religious
Mr. Barron as well?
Thank you. Joining me is Mr. Burke from DPW and Ms. Miller from OPZ, and Ms. Kenny will be sticking with us for the night. So we also discussed this one previously, but to remind the council and the public, 323 makes changes to county zoning requirements under Article 18 to allow religious facilities as permitted, as a permitted use within small business zoning districts. The origin of this bill is related to an ongoing capital improvement project to improve vehicle, bicycle, and pedestrian access to Jessup Elementary School. As part of that project, the county intends to obtain a portion of land adjacent to the current roadway for the improvements. A church is currently built on the property in question. So as part of that, county's acquisition of the church property, the county intends to exchange the property for a parcel of county-owned land across the street where a new church may be constructed. The county-owned property is zoned for small business development, which under current law, current county law would preclude it from having a religious facility built, constructed on it. The changes in bill 3-23 would relieve the county property of these restrictions and allow the construction of a new church building. Additionally, prohibiting construction of a church within the small business zoning district may amount to a violation of the Federal Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000. Amending our code would ensure compliance with federal law and shield the county from any potential liability. With that, happy to answer any questions.
No questions here. Council members? Nope, seeing none. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We will now hear from individuals who signed up ahead of time, which, are there any in the audience that have? If not, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak up in reference to All right, the public hearing on bill number 323 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 323.
Bill number 323, an ordinance concerning zoning, small business districts, religious facilities.
Madam Secretary, there are amendments to this bill, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I believe Ms. Fiedler has an amendment to offer.
All right, so Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one, this amendment repeals a prohibition on outside storage as an accessory use in small business districts and allows outside storage as permitted use in small business districts if the outside storage is accessory to a permitted use and is limited to 10% of the allowed lot coverage.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to give a little background on this amendment, so I have a church in the 5th District that is in the process of going through the comprehensive rezoning for hopefully small business in the future. They do have small business land use. They have currently two buses that they use to get parishioners to the church on Sundays, but also for outreach and ministry within the communities. So looking at the bill, not that the bill brought this forward, but in existing code for small business, there is the limitation of one vehicle per small business property. And I thought, you know, this might be the perfect time to amend this section of the code. And in talking to Office of Planning and Zoning, small business zones are kind of an outlier as far as what we allow for outside storage. Residential districts are allowed to have a commercial vehicle of any gross weight parked on the property as long as it's in connection with an allowed use. And even in residential districts, we do allow outside storage as an accessory to a principal use at 10% and commercial districts are allowed to have 15% or higher of outside storage. I felt that this was a good way to address this and kind of update the code for small business zones, and I ask for your support this evening.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, first, I think, I want to thank the sponsor of this amendment for working with the council. As noted, it is not related directly to the bill, but it, this bill turned out to be a good vehicle, pun intended, to address the other problem. So with that, the administration does not have an issue with this amendment. Want to thank the sponsor for working with planning and zoning staff to get the verbiage correct. And we did check with DPW and with the parties involved in the transfer of land. This will, two-week delay will not jeopardize the deal.
Motion, or any questions from any of the other council? Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Is there any discussion? All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll call on amendment number one.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment number one has been adopted.
All right, and so the next time we'll hear, 323 is our next council meeting in March, so thank you all for the opportunity to speak against that bill. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 423.
Bill number 423, an ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education, supplementary appropriation, and transfer of funds.
Hannah Dyer from the County Executive's Office, here to present.
Ms. Dyer, I do have one question. Does Mr. Barron give you the harder bills, or like, is there, just to make sure?
Oh yeah, I take all the hard ones.
Okay, I'm just curious.
That's what they move me over for. Okay, so Hannah Dyer here to present bill 423. This bill was discussed at the last work session, and here at the table with me, I have still Ms. Kenny, Stephen Turrow from the Budget Office, and Matt Stansky and Melissa Camilla from the Board of Ed. Bill 423 makes supplementary appropriations to the Board of Ed totaling just over $19 million from various unanticipated revenue sources, and the appropriations use both state and federal grant funds as well as investment revenues at the county level. This bill does not include any new general fund appropriations. And in addition to making the supplementary appropriations, the bill also transfers funds between certain line items within the Board of Ed's budget to account for discrepancies between the projected and real costs of transportation services. And the fiscal note prepared by the Budget Office provides you some more detail on the new appropriations and the appropriation changes. And if you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
And just for the public's knowledge, we've had a work session here last week, and during the work session, we actually went through in detail on all of these bills that we're discussing this evening. So if we don't have comments or questions that are sort of emanating from this dais, please know that we had a lot of questions last week, and so it's not that we're not interested in it, but we have studied this over the last few weeks. We will now open the public hearing on bill number 423. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
We did not, Mr. Chair, nothing.
And we will hear, now hear from individuals who signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who now, which I don't see on the spreadsheet, I didn't see anyone that signed up ahead of time as well, but is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on bill number 423? Seeing none. The public hearing on bill number 423 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 423.
Bill number 423, an ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education, supplementary appropriation, and transfer of funds.
All right, any comments? Pretty easy, okay. This is actually going too smoothly. I'm over like, okay, something's wrong here, right? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 423.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Bill number 423 has been passed.
Madam Secretary, I do got a question. Are work sessions, are they recorded?
Yes, Mr. Chair, they are, and the videos are posted online. If you go to the council's webpage over on the left-hand side, you should see videos.
Check. And I say that just to point out, for those that are interested in some of the questions and concerns we had during the work session, I would encourage them to go online, look at those previous videos so that you can see exactly what was brought up during that work session. So, thank you. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 523.
Bill number 523, an ordinance concerning current expense budget, supplementary appropriations, Cattail Creek and Upper Magathie River Waterways Improvement District Grants Special Revenue
All right, Ms. Dyer, go ahead. All right, thank you. Hannah Dyer again, and Mr. Turrow and Ms. Kenny are still with me, and we're also joined by Grace Tidings and Donna Perkins, and this is to discuss bill 523, which we also discussed at the last work session. Bill 523 makes supplementary appropriations from unanticipated grant funds totaling just over $500,000. Most of these funds are directed to programs within the county health department, and there's about $75,000 that's directed to the Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families Emergency Food and Shelter Program. These appropriations stem from grant revenues, and like the last bill, there are no general fund appropriations in this bill. This bill also makes an appropriation to the Cattail Creek and Upper Magathie River Waterway Improvement District totaling $5,500, and this appropriation utilizes existing funds from the district to make a loan payment. So with that, we can answer any questions you may have.
Just don't get worried here. All right, we will now hear, any questions from the council? We will now open a public hearing on bill number 523. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on bill number 523? Seeing no movement. The public hearing on bill number 523 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 523.
Bill number 523, an ordinance concerning current expense budget, supplementary appropriations, Cattail Creek and Upper Magathie River Waterways Improvement District Grants Special Revenue Fund.
All right, any questions? Oh, finally.
No, you're gonna be disappointed, Mr. Chair. I really just wanted to comment once again that we did have a very thorough discussion about this at the work session, so if it seems like we're uninterested, that would not be the case. We've just thoroughly combed through this bill last week.
Yes. There was still a comment. I saw a red light, so it was good. Seeing no other red lights up here. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 523.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Bill number 523 has been passed.
All right, I think this is the bill I think everyone's here for. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 623.
Bill number 623, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, zoning, accessory dwelling units.
Mr. Barron? I'm sorry, I should call the sponsor first since she's, it's her bill. I just saw your light. Sorry about that.
No problem, no problem. I'm so thrilled to finally have this bill up for public hearing. We've again talked about this in our work session quite a bit on last, Tuesday of last week, and basically it allows, it really broadens our codes accessory dwelling unit law. Currently, accessory dwelling units are only allowed with very expansive minimum square footage of the lot size, and if they're contained inside the primary dwelling, and this just adds a lot more possibility, a lot more places where you can have an accessory dwelling unit, and removes as much of the, you know, kind of unnecessary overregulation as possible. So I'm grateful for the conversation that we had on it last week, and I look forward and fingers crossed for my colleagues' support.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joining me at the table is Ms. Miller from OPZ and Mr. McCara from IMP and Ms. Kelly Kenny from our Office of Law. There was a great conversation during the work session on this. I imagine we'll cover a lot of the same ground tonight. ADU ordinances exist across the country. They do not lead to an ADU on every lot, but provide a very important tool in the toolbox for flexible housing options. As mentioned at the work session, the administration appreciates our ongoing work with the sponsor in addressing the affordable housing needs of the county. ADUs will play an important role in addressing that need. We are happy to support bill 6-23. As the sponsor mentioned, the administration and expert staff from county departments met with the sponsor, the drafters multiple times to get this legislation ready to, for introduction. We appreciate that dialogue and collaborative work that went into it. We'll reserve the rest of our comments if there are any amendments, but we ask that you pass this bill when it's ready.
Thank you. All right. So we will, any questions? Nope. So we will now open the public hearing on bill number 623. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online tool?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the council, we did. We received 19 submissions of testimony through that online testimony tool. The summary was posted online and shared with the entire council.
We will now hear from individuals who signed up ahead of time. I have a list of folks who have signed up ahead of time, and I will go in that order. Again, please state your name, address for the record, and we will limit your speaking to two minutes. So the first person I will call up is Ms. Mary Grace Fitz Henry. Is that Mr. Cantori? Greg? Erica Smith Ewing? Mr. Jeff Hill? Ms. Trudy McFall? Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Mary Grace Fitz Henry. Address is 2445 Holly Avenue, Annapolis, Maryland 21401. I'm going to start. I appreciate the opportunity, express my strong support for bill 623 on behalf of the Anarone County Association of Realtors. Accessory dwelling units or ADUs, also known as granny flats, in-law suites, backyard cottages, or self-contained living spaces located on the same lot as a single-family home. By legalizing ADUs, Anarone County can provide a range of benefits for its residents and community. Firstly, legalizing ADUs can provide a flexible housing option that can be accessible and easy to navigate for older adults or people with disabilities. It will allow for aging-in-place, meaning our older citizens can stay in their community and homes as they age, rather than having to move to a different location to access appropriate housing or care. ADUs also offer an opportunity for multi-generational living by providing a space for aging parents or relatives to live close to their family members while maintaining some level of independence or privacy. Secondly, ADUs can offer affordable housing options for residents in the county. As the cost of living continues to rise, it has become increasingly difficult for many families to afford housing. ADUs provide an opportunity for families to create a rental income stream or to house a family member, providing a more affordable option to homeownership. Legalizing ADUs in the county will help diversify housing options and ensure that residents of all income levels have access to safe and affordable housing in this county. Thirdly, ADUs can increase the availability of rental units. This is particularly important given the current shortage of affordable rental housing in the area. By legalizing ADUs, property owners can offer additional rental units to tenants, easing the strain on the existing housing market. This is especially important for people who work in the county but cannot afford to live here, which is a very huge issue that a lot of people see every day, as it would provide more options for them to find suitable housing. So in conclusion, do you want sprawl, or do you want ADUs? Do you want your children or family members to move out of the county due to the lack of affordable housing in this county, or do you want ADUs? And lastly, do you want your in-laws in your house, or do you want them in an ADU in your backyard? Thank you.
ADU. Thank you, thank you for your, ma'am?
My name is Erica Smith Ewing. My address is 1212 Hillside Terrace, Alexandria, Virginia. I'm a senior attorney at the Institute for Justice. We are a national nonprofit organization. We work both locally and nationally to protect individual rights, including property rights, and I have specific expertise in zoning law and policy. We encourage the county to pass this ordinance for two reasons. First, it's necessary to increase the supply of housing in the county. Adding more supply is the only way to bring down rental and housing prices so that our children and parents can still live children and parents can still live in their hometowns. That's why the AARP, for example, is such a huge supporter of ADUs. I know when some people hear about the need to build more housing, they worry about big developers coming in and building sky rises. But ADUs increase housing in a way that puts power in the hands of local property owners. This is truly a local solution to the housing crisis. Second, we have watched as other areas in the country have passed similar ordinances with no ill effects. This includes Arlington and Alexandria, Virginia, where I live. My own neighbor has built an ADU with no issues. And there's several states that have passed statewide measures to allow ADUs across the entire state, including Utah, Maine, California, and others, again with no ill effects. If anything, jurisdictions that legalize ADUs later end up further relaxing their ordinances to allow more ADUs because they become so popular. ADUs work and benefit the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Abby Root, 1336 Chickaberry Way, Odin 10, representing the League of Women Voters of Anaral County. The League supports Bill 623. This bill will make it easier for property owners to have accessory dwelling units on their property. In 1992, the League adopted an affordable housing position which supports meeting the housing and human services needs of special populations and increasing housing opportunities for people of low or moderate income. In 2021, we reaffirm that position with additional research. ADUs are one way to meet the challenge of the rising cost of housing throughout the county. ADUs can be more affordable for low and moderately low-income residents. ADUs can decrease isolation and depression in older adults and disabled persons by allowing them to remain in their community, close to family and friends. ADUs also can be a housing solution to empty nesters or young adults just entering the workforce. ADUs would provide new housing options while maintaining the character of the community. The League urges the council to vote in favor of Bill 623. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, my name is William Jeffrey Hill, 613 Emerson Place, Severna Park. I've been a long-term resident of Severna Park, and I support the bill. I agree with everything that's been said so far. And also, I think it'll help, there's a number of residents or citizens in our county that already have illegal ADUs, and this will end up making, taking that away and making it a legal zoning ordinance. So I'm fully in support.
Thank you. Ms. McFall?
Good evening. I'm with you. This went so fast, I was at home, and man, did I have to hustle. So it's lovely to be here, and thank you. I'm Trudy McFall, and I'm here tonight as chairman of the Anaral Affordable Housing Coalition to tell you that we consider it as our board, an organization, and some members of most all the key entities involved in affordable housing in the county, and they enthusiastically endorsed it. We're very much in favor of it as a way to provide more modest costs, smaller, more modest-cost housing, diversify the housing stock, and generally also helps homeowners, which we sometimes forget, something I could personally share my own experience on that as a 40-year owner of an ADU in the city of Annapolis. But we think it's a good bill. We appreciate so much that Councilmember Rodwin came to our coalition meeting, told us what she hoped to do after the election, and gave us a chance to provide input. So I don't, I won't, you know what's in the bill, I won't review it, but we like it all. I was reading this sheet, and I see the change of dialing down the short term, and maybe this isn't a coalition, maybe this is a Trudy policy, it's just, are you sure you want to do any kind of short-term rentals? It's a really hot topic in the city of Annapolis when people get short-term rentals and their ADUs on their blocks, and they think they've inherited party houses. And I see you've toned it down from the whole unit, but I just say, just be really sure you're up for that, because there are councilmembers in the city of Annapolis who are already talking about trying to pull that back. And from, to be honest, from the coalition's perspective, we like ADUs not because they could be short-term rentals and party houses, but because they provide long-term, more affordable housing. So that would be my only sort of personal comment to you, and since I have two minutes, I haven't beeped yet, I'll tell you. I've had a, bought a house with an ADU-attached unit in the city of Annapolis, and it really enabled me, who was pretty modestly paid state employee, to live in a nice house. I have rented that unit to teachers and people of relatively modest incomes who could never have rented a house where I live. And it's just, it's a wonderful way to diversify the housing stock and provide opportunities for renters to live in more diverse locations. So thank you very much for doing this, and all the other good things you have done and will do for affordable housing in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Sir?
Stuart Cohen, 15 Dean Street, Annapolis, Maryland 21401. I am here as an AARP volunteer advocate. AARP Maryland strongly supports this proposed ordinance and has enjoyed an opportunity to talk with Councilwoman Radvian about the issues in the bill. As one of the other panelists mentions, this is an issue that AARP has been involved in for decades, really. I will tell you, I moved to this county in 1978. I became a chief attorney at a legal aid bureau office. My wife was a schoolteacher, a special ed teacher in this county. We were shocked at the price of housing we moved from Western New York. It hasn't changed in those 50, or 40, or 50 years. It's still a unique problem to this area, and this is one small effort that can address that kind of housing shortage. I'm not going to repeat all the reasons everyone else has mentioned, I'll just mention a couple of others. One is, people who get ill and need live-in caregivers may be able to use an ADU to house their caregiver. Another is, people, many of these can be built in neighborhoods where there's walkability and transportation, so that there's not a need to have additional parking and cars and traffic. And the third is, this is really important, people, as they age, AARP surveys have shown over and over and over, they overwhelmingly want to remain in place. It's impossible for them to remain in place in many instances, but they want to then remain in their communities. ADUs are an opportunity to remain in their place, in their community, where they have lived for decades. So thank you for the opportunity to address you, and we, AARP Maryland strongly endorses this proposed ordinance.
Thank you. Appreciate all the testimony you all. Please return your seat. Thank you all for the testimony. I do want to, was there a Greg Cantori in the audience? Sir? Yeah, you can come up, because... You may have missed your name there. Please, and what I would like to do, he was the last one on the list, is there anyone else that would like to speak in reference to this bill? Please come up to the table, to Mr. Cantori's right, for public testimony, if you did not get an opportunity to sign up. Just remember, please state your name and address for the record, and then you'll be restricted to two minutes and testimony. Mr. Cantori, thank you.
Go ahead and start. Greg Cantori, I'm with 105 Eastern Avenue in Annapolis, Maryland. And I'm here to support the bill, 623, very, very much so. I am not going to repeat what everyone else said, because they have some expertise, as you heard from the Institute of Justice, the AARP, and others, that ADUs are a great soft solution to our housing crisis. And what I want to do, actually, is congratulate you for taking the leadership role in doing this. As of even today, we were testifying on behalf of a Maryland ADU law, which is now going to just be looking at studying it for the next couple of years. You're actually taking action, and you're to be commended for that, and actually doing something about this. So what I do want to mention is that I'd like to see ADU 2.0. So I'm going to go ahead and push you a little bit. What we've found across the country is that when ADU ordinances are permitted, we don't see a great uptick in the number of units. And every study has shown that, that when you do permit it, you'll see some small increase, but you're not going to see a large increase. California took five years to tweak their bills to create a larger number of ADUs, and they did that by creating a navigator's office. So I want you to go from just permitting them to promoting them. Promoting them means that you're actually going to be asking the homeowners to take an active role in our housing issue. And it means things like low-interest loans, grants perhaps for people with lower incomes, lower-income homeowners, as well as lower-income renters on that. And an ADU is a fraction of the cost of a standard affordable housing unit, which now stands at about $300,000 a unit. You can put an ADU in a garage for about $100, $120,000. So you can see the cost to the county to create an affordable housing unit is a fraction of standard affordable housing provisions. So navigator's office, and also the interest loans, as I mentioned, basically, I'd like to see ADUs be as simple as putting solar panels on your house. One call does it all, and that's how you get it, right? You get the financing, you get the installation, you get the management, all in one fell swoop. That's what I'd like to see you do.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for your leadership.
Appreciate it, thank you. Sir?
Okay, thank you. My name is Stephen Waddy. I live at 7968 Heatherman Drive. And I also am in favor of the bill. As a realtor, I have helped sell properties to individuals who built out garages, who built out separate living facilities. As a property manager, I have managed properties that had ADUs, and I found them to be very helpful for a lot of the homeowners that I work for. And, but I will echo what Mr. Cantori said about the affordability aspect of having, well, if we're asking to build affordable housing, it means that you have to subsidize the cost for a lot of these homeowners, especially because many of them are experiencing a seller's market at this time, and have for the past 20 years at least. And the seller's market raises mortgages. And if you're asking, as I heard, people to subsidize the mortgages that homeowners have, then homeowners are going to try and cash in on the boom. And so they're going to want to charge high rents. I live over in Hanover. You have basements being rented out for $1,000, $1,500, you know, and it's, there's no reason why they should be so high. And it's only because there's no price controls. And it's something that I think this county needs and has needed, and it's something that you all should be, and I hope, you know, the housing, our advocate in the county executive's office will make the, make that decision to add price controls and cost reduction for rent, as well as for the build-out of ADUs. Definitely support this opportunity, and definitely congratulate Councilwoman Radvian on bringing this forward. Yep, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waddy. Ma'am?
Hello, my name is Susan Margulies, and I live at 113 Conduit Street. And I wanted to speak in favor of this bill with this beautiful amendment right here, which strikes lines seven through 10, and allows the homeowner to short-term rent their beautiful, newly constructed ADU. Because I want to remind everyone that it's the homeowners with the money, and the hammers, and the nails, and the time, and the dust, and the stress of constructing this ADU. And it's scary, and it's expensive. And without this amendment, it's as though you're saying to the homeowner, here, build an ADU, and strap on these lead weights, so it takes you a long time to get your way back to financial stability. But with this amendment and allowing the homeowner to short-term rent, it's like you're giving them wings, and they can flap their way quickly back to financial stability. And homeowners need that flexibility, because it's too much money, and it's too scary. And an owner-occupied short-term rental, the owner is right there on the property, and they can hear a pin drop long before the noise echoes its way to a neighbor. And to refer in any way, shape, or form to an owner-occupied short-term rental as a party house is frankly grossly prejudicial. Owner-occupied short-term rentals are a way for people to come together. And you're talking about nurses that can rent for two weeks or something like that. You know, sometimes doctors do short residencies over at Anaral County Medical Hospital, actors coming in for our plays. There are so many reasons and why short-term rentals are so important. And we like to say in the community that, don't forget, we're paying you a hotel tax. And so we like to say that homeowners are asking to follow all your rules and regulations, and then pay you money to be left alone. So please consider passing this bill with this amendment. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Please be seated. Go back to your seats. Thank you for the public testimony. I think that was the last call for public testimony on 623. So the public testimony for 623 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 623.
Bill Number 623: An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development Zoning Accessory Dwelling Units.
Mr. Baron is back, and I see there are amendments to Bill 623. Any questions thus far, before we go to the amendments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question that actually came from a constituent. I would assume this is the case, but just for the record, these ADUs would be subject to our inspection and permits and zoning, building laws, correct?
Was that to the sponsor or to the administration?
I'll send that to the sponsor. The short answer is yes.
I can confirm, yes.
In the preparation, in the drafting of this bill, I think I met with almost every department head in the executive branch. So I got input from all of them to make sure that we were going to be, you know, doing things in a way that would, you know, not kind of upend our, you know, lots of other regulations. Just the ones that are mentioned here.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Ledbetter?
It's somewhat of a follow-on question to that, and this one is related specifically to, and again, we can direct this to Ms. Radvian or to council, but the question specifically was related to well and septic. In District 7, we obviously have a considerable amount of those, and so just making sure that the building of a separate ADU, or something that would be included in the actual original structure, would that be subject to the same processes of making sure that the well and septic had the capacity to handle those additional people?
I will, once again, give a short answer as yes. And Mr. McCarron, if you wanted to add anything to that about how that process would work?
Andrew McCarron, Department of Inspections and Permits. It's a little bit more of a question for the Health Department, but we would kind of look at it the same way you would any building addition. The Health Department would review that if it was on well and septic, to make sure it's, septic's adequate-sized, adequate-sized well to supply for the new facilities being put in.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Follow-up to that follow-up. ADUs, would ADU fees be required?
I'm going to direct it to the Office of Law.
Sure. Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. If a, if it comes in for a permit, it would be assessed ADUs if it is a detached dwelling, if it's within the structure, it would be looked at as an addition, which does not have any additional ADUs charged to it.
Okay, thank you.
And I got a question for the sponsor. If I was building a, if I built a house, and I built a garage, detached garage, and on top of that garage, and maybe the speakers at the table can answer as well, and I built a small studio on top of the garage, which happens quite often, is that an ADU?
It could be, I'll actually hand this over to the administration, possibly Ms. Kenny.
Sure. Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. If it has a kitchen, then it is considered to be a dwelling unit, and so under this bill, it would be considered an ADU.
Okay. I know one of the other speakers said that they were being built illegally in the past, whatever. So if I had a garage that was built with the house, and later on, above the garage, converted that, obviously going through the permitting process, it would be identified as livable space, little kitchenette, and so at that time, it would be designated as an ADU. When it comes to, I know we're going to talk about this over the next couple of weeks as well, parking for that garage space, is that, that ADU on top of that garage, is that required to have additional parking spaces?
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. And I should clarify my last question, because in your scenario, if that is... And I should clarify my last question, because in your scenario, if that is built now without this law, it's illegal. Because a second dwelling unit is not allowed right now unless it's within your structure.
Well, I was speaking to one of the other speakers who talked about it being done now. I don't know if he's still here.
Right, I do. Yes, there are certainly lots of dwelling units, you know, in the county that are illegal. So the scenario you're talking about would be not, is not allowed right now under the code. But if that were to be proposed under this bill, if this bill were to pass, then yes, that would be considered an ADU, and then would have to comply with whatever parking provisions ultimately passed in this bill.
Check. Okay, all right. For the record, I am definitely supporting ADUs. There's a vision in my head that someday I want to build my dream house, and at some point, I want my kids to take over that house, and then I'll move out back or move in Mr. Volkey's ADU that he's building, and I'll go, he and I can co-locate together because we'll be off the council. They don't know yet. They don't know yet. But Mr. Volkey, I see you're lighting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So yeah, and Mr. Chair has kind of gotten to the place that I'm interested to get to too, which is parking. And so I, the one concern that I have about the parking reduction is the idea that I already hear a lot of parking complaints, and I brought this up. So assuming for a moment that we pass this bill with an alteration where we kept those parking requirements, then my understanding would be if I was to build a new home and I wanted to build both the home and the ADU, you would just require that the parking be whatever you have to have for the single-family dwelling plus whatevers for the ADU. Is that right if we kept that in the code but we passed this bill? It's a hypothetical, I know.
I'm just looking at Ms. Miller to make sure. Yes, that is correct.
Okay. If, at present, this is probably a softball, I hope, what is the parking requirement for a single-family dwelling in terms of parking spaces that they have to have under our code? Is it two and a half?
It may be a softball from Ms. Miller. I don't know the number of it.
It is 2.5.
Okay, thank you. And that is off-street parking, right? On-street parking would not count toward that two and a half spaces, is that right?
Right, it's off-street parking.
Okay. Is there anything in the code that allows OPZ, when looking at something, any kind of dwelling, to count on-street parking, or does it entirely have to be off-street parking?
Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. There are some allowances in the code for shared parking. They're typically used for commercial uses or a shopping center complex or something. I don't know that I've really seen them used for something like a single-family dwelling.
Okay. And we were having, not more than three of us, to be clear, we're having some discussions about this prior to the meeting, and so that's why I'm asking you about this. So like in the city of Annapolis, for example, I know that they have different regulations, but let's take another dense area of the county. Maybe we talk about Brooklyn Park. Those homes that are there, if, many of them, I'm assuming, were built prior to some of these regulations being in the code. So that's probably part of where some of the parking problems stem. But if you were to build a new home somewhere in Brooklyn Park, would you be required to meet the current parking requirements in the code?
Yes, you would.
Okay. And so if I had, again, my hypothetical scenario, where we keep the one parking spot for ADUs, we don't get rid of that like the bill is proposing, and then we have the two and a half. If I'm in Brooklyn Park and I get some sort of subdivision, I find some subdividable lot, and I build a house on there, and I want to put an ADU in the back, I'm going to have to get three and a half spots off-street parking to be able to do the house and the ADU, is that right? And if that's confusing, tell me where.
Yeah, that's correct if you're talking about a single-family dwelling.
Okay. If it was a townhouse, would there be, would there be less parking requirements?
Townhome parking requirements are different from a single-family.
Okay. So, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
So back to that, if you're in Brooklyn Park and you have one of the older homes that were grandfathered in, since the, before the law came into effect, and they wanted to build an ADU, would they still be required to build, have three spaces if they were, you see what I'm saying, like if the ADU was only one? While I let you answer.
Again, Lynn Miller with OPZ. If the principal residence is existing, then they, and then they built a new ADU, then the additional parking required for an ADU is what would be required.
Just the one, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Makes sense. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that would have to be off-street, right? That could not be on-street. There's no way to do that on-street.
Correct.
Okay. The concern I have is we're getting rid of minimum lot requirements on any of this. And so we're opening up the whole county to these. And in places like Brooklyn Park where you have older homes, but you may see people who want to take advantage of this because it makes a lot of sense for them to put an ADU in their backyard, now all of a sudden, we're saying, "Any lot, you can come in, you can get these, your max 800 square feet or half the size of your house, whichever smaller." And all of a sudden, we're going to have a lot of parking problems. That's the concern that I have with this. And so I don't know if there's any other jurisdictions that you're aware of that have done this, that have gotten rid of all parking requirements, and if they've had any issues with it or not. But I hear a lot about parking complaints under the existing code, let alone where we're loosening for ADUs and sort of doing that too. So I don't know if you've got any background on that anywhere else other than here.
Lynn Miller, again, we have seen examples of ADU ordinances that both require a parking space for the ADU and also that don't. So I think jurisdictions have tried it both ways.
You got Mr. Volkey? Are there provisions in the current code or where exemptions could be made depending on the property in discussion? So if there's a property that's landlocked, for example, and they wanted to build an ADU in the back, because in Brooklyn Park, there's obviously some houses that you just can't, you can't get through or create an additional space in the front, but you can't get to the back either, right? And so in some people's mind up there, they were thinking if it's going to be a relative, they will come in their house or go through the backyard fence and go to the ADU. Are there provisions either in the current code or in this that would allow exemptions to be sort of discussed or allowed, depending on the circumstance of the property? Because if they were grandfathered in, then they can't just tear down their house to make a parking spot.
Right. Lynn Miller, I can't think of any provisions that are currently in the code that would specifically exempt the parking requirement that you guys are considering. But there is the option typically with Article 18 to request a variance.
Right, right. Okay.
And that would be a decision granted or not by the hearing officer.
Right. Okay. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Going back and forth here. I'm sorry. I'm looking this way. Can you pause for a second, gather your thoughts?
Sure.
And...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to have to have a flag or something. I think we're going to continue to discuss this if a certain amendment isn't introduced. But I'd like to, if I could, swing back to the EDU conversation and your question about the garage. Now, Ms. Kenny, you said that if, if the ADU is a new structure, then an EDU fee would be part of the process. But if it is an existing structure that the ADU is built into, it would not. So I'm going to put a hypothetical scenario in front of you. I have a detached garage that does not have plumbing running to it, but I am building an ADU on the top. Would I be exempt from an EDU?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. And just for the record, I'll tell everybody what an EDU is, just in case they don't know. I should have done that the first time. An EDU is an equivalent dwelling unit, and that's the unit of measurement for connection to the county's public water or sewer system. And every single-family dwelling is assessed one EDU. If you were to construct a single-family dwelling, you would be assessed one EDU, and then you pay the capital facility connection charges that are associated with that, except for in Article 13. So just in case nobody had that background or for the benefit of the audience, I figured I'd explain that. And so going to your hypothetical question with, if somebody had a detached garage that was not connected to the county's water or sewer system, and they would have to come in for a permit to convert all or some of that garage into an accessory dwelling unit, then I think it would go to DPW to confirm whether there is adequate capacity in the county's water and sewer system, because that's what the EDU and the facility charges are all about, to make sure that there's more, capacity for more connections to the county system. So they would most likely assess an EDU for that new connection, because it would be a new connection to the county's water and sewer system.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I might follow up on that at some point, but I just want to ask about studios. Like right now, if you come in and you're a developer and you want to do some sort of multifamily housing, what is the parking requirement for a studio? Maybe I'm not asking that specifically enough either, but I'm thinking like, if you're building multifamily housing, you have a bunch of studio apartments or something that you're putting in, do we calculate some sort of parking requirement for those? Trying to find like, what's the closest equivalent one-to-one to what we're talking about here?
Lynn Miller, I would actually need to refer to the code on that one.
Okay.
I don't have that off the top of my head.
No worries. Appreciate that.
Any other? Ms. Levitt?
This is a bit of a segue, slightly different topic, but when looking at the restriction on, or the lack of restriction on the size of the lot that's in this bill, is there anything, whether it be through planning and zoning or in this bill, that would restrict the height of a separate ADU? Meaning, I understand that it says either 50% or 800 square feet, whatever is less. Is there anything that would keep or prevent someone from building a two-story? Because maybe the setbacks would, don't allow it to be wide, but they want to go tall. Is there anything that has any parameters around that?
Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. Since the ADU would be treated in terms of bulk regs as an accessory structure, so all the bulk regulations in each, for each zoning district would apply. So that includes setbacks, height.
Okay.
Is that right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Follow-up to that question. I actually discussed this bill at a community meeting last week, and the question about setbacks was asked, so this is a perfect opportunity for the record. If I am building an ADU on my property, but I only have the space to do so if I am right up against another property line or not doing exactly the setbacks that are required, I would have to apply for a variance to do that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I pulled up the code, Ms. Miller. I think it's 183-104, talks about dwellings multifamily, and it says efficiency in one-bedroom, one space for each dwelling unit. Does that sound right? I think under that, then it says two bedrooms or two spaces, three or more bedrooms or three spaces for each dwelling unit. So I believe that would be, from what I can tell, sort of the closest equivalent to what we're talking about.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no more discussions. I see we have an amendment for Bill 623. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment maintains existing parking requirements for accessory dwelling units.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we've sort of teed up this whole discussion already going into this amendment, so I won't rehash it all, but this just keeps the code the way it is that indicates there would be one parking spot required for accessory dwelling units. So currently, the way the bill is drafted, it repeals that parking requirement, and this would keep the parking requirement, simple as that.
Ms. Levitt?
I just wanted to mention, make a note, is it possible I would love to be added as sponsor to this amendment? I share Mr. Volkey's concerns about the parking. I, you know, in our district, we have numerous areas where street parking is already a problem, and I hear, it's a top concern for a lot of folks within the district, and so I do support this amendment.
I guess we have a motion, whoa. We have a motion to adopt the amendment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Fiedler's second.
All right, the amendment is adopted. Any discussions?
Yeah, I, thank you, Mr. Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So we did have a lengthy discussion about the parking issue in the work session, and some examples of real-life scenarios were discussed. You know, you have a family that has three teenagers, and obviously with the required parking, when the house was built, there's not that much off-street parking. So you do have cars parked on the street. That I consider something that we can control. We don't know how many children a family will have. But we do know that with an ADU, you are building an additional residential area that may be built in an area that is not walkable. Certainly, there are walkable areas of our county, but I can think of areas in my district that are off of very unwalkable roads that are, you know, one-acre properties that could have these. I think of Shore Acres Road, half of Shore Acres Road can't get to the school in walking distance and can't access the shopping center. I think of Old County Road and Severna Park, which those individual parcels or properties have certainly enough room to do an ADU. But I get emails all the time about how unsafe it is to walk on Old County Road. And like Mr. Volkey, I hear quite frequently, especially in our five neighborhoods, about parking issues. So I think if we are knowingly adding residential capacity to a property, we have to address the fact that in most cases, there will be one, at least one vehicle. So I am going to be supporting this amendment tonight. So Lisa Rodvian, District 6, I really would like to oppose this amendment mainly because, you know, I think the whole goal here is affordable housing. And if we put obstacles in the path of affordable housing, we are not going to get the affordable housing that we need, because there may not be place to put an extra off-street parking space. That said, I also think we don't ordinarily, you know, we don't ordinarily, you know, as one of my colleagues mentioned, we don't ordinarily require, you know, a count of how many cars or how many parking spaces, or I guess vehicles, you know, might be on a particular property. I mean, I could go out and buy another car and not sell one, and then I'll have another car, and there's nothing anyone could do to stop me. And I think we also really have to be careful not to overestimate the rate at which ADUs can be built. So at most, I don't think we should expect a brand-new ADU on every block. I don't even think we should expect a brand-new ADU on every street. I think if we get one in every neighborhood, that would be an achievement and not likely to cause any, you know, dramatic issue in parking. On the other hand, if we add a parking requirement, we are absolutely going to slow down the creation of needed affordable housing. So I oppose this amendment, and I hope my colleagues will too, fully respecting the concerns about parking. I just think that, you know, the scale at which we're talking about creating or the pace of creation of ADUs is not likely to create a parking issue. And, you know, if you think about a lot of the folks that we're talking about, who would be residents of ADUs, very likely to not have cars. If you're talking about, you know, like a live-in caretaker or, you know, elderly, elderly parents might not have, or elderly family member might not have a car, might not wish to drive anymore, you know, a young person might not be able to afford a car, might be looking for a public transportation or a way to get to their work other than a car. So I also, you know, in the grand scheme of things, I also envision a lot more public transportation in our community, and of course, as an electric bike rider, a lot more electric bikes, but, which take up a lot less space. But really to say that, I think, I don't want to, I don't want to get caught up in parking because I think it's a concern. I understand that it is a concern, but I think, you know, ADUs are not going to significantly contribute to parking. In fact, I don't know that they would contribute at all. So I really encourage my colleagues to vote this down.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I just echo what Councilwoman Rodvian said. We don't limit what people have now. I know, I mean, most people nowadays have more than two cars in there if they have a family. My house, we could have seven cars, and I, if they had their druthers, I know my neighbors would much rather I have an ADU in the backyard with one additional car than the five additionals we could have on top of it. But there's not a limit on that. I agree with Ms. Rodvian that the pace we've seen across the nation when they're built, this doesn't result in an influx of thousands of ADUs in neighborhoods. It's going to be slow. Many of them are already existing that would be in there, and I just do not think it's going to have the negative impact people that it has. And putting the restriction in place... restriction in place will far more impact negatively in the expansion of ADUs than the parking issue would be a detriment.
Thank you, Ms. Speaker. Mr. Volke?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this argument about how many cars people have on existing properties is a little misleading in the discussion, because, you're right, nobody from zoning or planning or inspections and permits goes out and checks how many cars you have today. But when they built your house, they did require that there was a certain minimum number of parking spaces that were there. And when the county gave that approval at that time, county said, "There are certain things we expect you to do." They don't come back later and say, "Hey, by the way, did you put too many cars in your driveway?" But there is a minimum when we do it, because that's really what we're talking about, right? We're talking about something new. We're not talking about existing ADUs and bringing them into compliance or something. Sure, that may be a benefit to this, but we are talking about effectively a new development. The concern that I have is, we can always come back, as we've talked about, and revisit this, if we find that we are impeding the growth of ADUs too much by these parking requirements. Maybe we move it to a half a space or something. Maybe we realize this isn't the right place to put this number. But if we say there are no parking requirements, and then we come back later and try to add them, we create a whole host of problems, because now we have people who are non-conforming, now we have people who are grandfathered in, you know, this is, I think there's some benefit to moving slowly. We had this on short-term rentals, we basically did certain things on that, and we had to come back and fix it later. And so my suggestion would be that we move a little more slowly on this, especially considering that we don't know what these ADUs are going to be used for, because I think at the appropriate time, there may be an amendment to remove the owner-occupied requirement, there may be an amendment to remove a prohibition on short-term rentals. So we don't know whether the whole property is going to be a short-term rental with two separate units, or whether both units are going to be long-term rentals, or whether one's a long and one's a short, or whether it's an owner-occupied in a long or a short in the back. There's all kinds of configurations that we can see for this, and so, I don't think we can go to the place where we say, "Hey, the people in the backyard are definitely going to be, you know, in the ADU, they're definitely going to be caregivers, or they're going to be an older person who isn't driving." We don't know that, it could be a whole host of things that we're opening up. So, my suggestion would be, instead of opening up Pandora's Box and seeing what happens, let's move through a little slowly. If we find this is a problem, and we don't get enough of these, then maybe we come back and adjust this parking requirement again. But I'd rather be on the side of moving slowly through it, than opening the whole thing up, and then having a slew of complaints from the community about the fact that these are creating huge parking problems. I mean, I've got places in my district that are quite dense, that have enough room that if people decided they wanted to put ADUs in the backyard, there will most certainly be people who take advantage of it. They're smart, they want to do it.
Ms. Raviyan? I just wanted to draw, I know you're next.
Okay, yeah, well, I just wanted to note that the city of Annapolis, their ADU law does not have any parking requirements, and it's been in place a few months, probably not enough to, you know, get the full effect, but, you know, we haven't seen any additional parking issues. I mean, Annapolis City, you know, there are places where, you know, if you buy a house there, you will be aware that, you know, you're living in an area with, I think of Eastport, a lot of Eastport has very tight parking, but if you're moving into that area, you're aware of that. And so, to come back later and say, "Well, I'm, you know, I'm not happy with the parking situation," well, that's what you bought into, you knew what it was like. I also really, really am struggling with the idea of prioritizing space for cars over space for people. People are the ones that need to make sure that we have some square footage for them to have a place to live, and, you know, cars, great, you know, I want, you know, we love our cars, but if they have to be a couple blocks away, to me, that is a totally appropriate sacrifice to make sure that people have housing. I think we need to, people over housing, people, excuse me, housing over cars, housing for people over cars. People should come first, not cars.
Ms. Leadbetter?
It's, uh, Leadbetter, District Seven. I, it's actually the point I was actually going to make, is the importance of people. When we're talking about cars parked on streets in our more dense areas, we're not just talk, we're not talking about the fact that people don't like to see cars, or the inconvenience of walking a couple blocks to get to your house. It's also a public safety issue. I know there are lots of areas within my district where if you have cars on both sides of the street, or too many cars, it's very hard for emergency vehicles to get access. And so for me, this is one of those things, I agree with Mr. Volke about, once this genie is out of the bottle, and if we move too fast, and we do inadvertently create an unsafe situation, where we are not able to get emergency vehicles down the roads that we need to get them down in a timely manner, we could have a situation where people are absolutely not coming first. We're talking about, you know, this is the right to feel safe in your home, to feel safe that the police, the fire, the EMS can get to you when they need to. And I would rather take the risk that we're going to ensure that these public safety requirements can be met. Do this slowly, and if we realize that we have a problem here, we've been over-restrictive, great, I'm willing to come back to the table and discuss it. I just would rather not take that public safety risk first. That's where I stand on that.
Ms. Raviyan?
Thank you. I really just want to respond to the public safety aspect. I mean, I certainly, I care enormously about public safety. When I met with the Fire Department and the Police Department, this was absolutely not something that came up, because, you know, that is something they already have to look into, and if we're talking about one car in a neighborhood, I don't think we're going to impede, you know, we're not going to create any impediment to public safety. In some cases, actually having cars along the side of the road can improve public safety, and that may be counterintuitive, but it slows traffic down, which means people are less likely to, you know, be in some of these pedestrian incidents that we've seen lately. You know, those aren't happening on roads where, you know, there are cars parked on the side, because people tend to drive slower, you know, when there's cars around. So, again, I really, I think the parking is, it's just a red herring, it's a red herring that we should stay away from. And really, you know, I definitely understand, you know, I want my, I think of, again, I think of my parents. If my, if my parents were in a place where, and my father passed away last year, so I'm still thinking of him, but I want to be in a place, I want everyone to be in a place where they can get the emergency care that they need, but I also want people to have a roof over their head. And I feel like we can't, you know, we can't try and trade off one for the other, we need to, we got to have roofs, we got to have roofs over their heads.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, Mr. Barron?
If I may, from the administration's point of view, this is a policy choice for the council, but just sort of hearing where we are, our preference would be to leave the bill as the sponsor drafted it. The, I heard a couple of things, and just to sort of sum them up, I think, you know, the scale of what's coming, I think, can be overestimated. I think the concern that is being raised on parking is valid, but it has to be looked at in the whole picture, and we need to balance that with the impediment that this would put on the construction of new ADUs. So, I think, as we look at what other jurisdictions have done, I think Councilwoman Raviyan mentioned, Annapolis, jurisdictions have gone both ways, but in all of those cases, you do not tend to see, you know, ADU cities, you see them pop up sporadically as folks make that decision. So, I think the concerns, while important, I don't, I think on balance, our preference would be to leave the bill as drafted.
Any additional comments? So we had a motion, we had a second, any other comments? And Mr. Barron has spoken. Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan?
Nay.
Ms. Leadbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard is absent. Mr. Volke?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Nay.
That is three in the affirmative, three in the negative, and one absent, Amendment Number One has been defeated.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment, read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two. This amendment strikes a conditional use requirement that the principal, single-family detached dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit be owner-occupied, and that notice of this requirement be recorded.
Madam?
Thank you. So this is an amendment that I decided to introduce after having discussions and hearing from many constituents after the bill was introduced to the public about a month ago, and this is something that I unintentionally added to the bill that could create another impediment to, you know, to the creation of ADUs. And actually, I think one of the very first pieces of testimony that we had that came in, and I believe it was Ms. Fiedler, it was a constituent of yours who had lived in Montgomery County, and, am I remembering this correctly? Okay, who had described the owner-occupied requirement as an impediment that may have changed their mind about whether or not to build an ADU at all in the first place. So I think we want to, you know, knock out those impediments, again, make this, it's going to be a slow train, it's going to be a very slow train, moving train, no matter what we do in this bill, and we don't want to do anything to make it slower. So this is another area where, you know, I, this, I actually, maybe this came from the original bill, so I'm just asking my colleagues to strike this.
I think, for me as well, for, I was thinking from a military standpoint, where I know several dozens of families that have purchased a home, got stationed here, purchased a home, PCS to, I don't know, another location, they rented out their dwelling, and then they came back to move into that dwelling after their three or six-year PCS to another site. And so, being in the military, I certainly didn't want to be forced to go somewhere and then, you know, not still be able to leverage or rent out my primary home, while my secondary home had either a relative or a friend in it, and be forced to sort of sell the property, or create a condition where it wasn't legal, in a sense, and so that's why I was okay with this amendment, so.
May I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Any second?
Raviyan, second.
Mr. Barron, did you have any discussions on this amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Administration appreciates the sponsor sharing this in advance. The, this is a policy choice, again, for the council. I think we were in discussions, in discussions with the sponsor of the bill and the maker of the amendment, understand the impediments that this might cause, and would be comfortable with this amendment.
Any other discussion from the council?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I'm trying to think of how to articulate this without being too confusing. Without this amendment, if I am a homeowner who has an ADU, I have to be present for any rentals, which makes short-term rental operation different than everybody else in the county who just has a single-family home and no ADU. Is that correct?
I'll answer this, but I also am looking at Ms. Kenny. I believe that is correct, because our current, well, we're, again, we're, this doesn't directly address short-term rentals, but it does address sort of a flaw that was unintentionally put in the original bill, that, under the current bill as drafted, in order to have a short-term rental, you would have to rent out the entire property, the short, the ADU and the primary residence, but be owner-occupied at the same time. So we're sort of creating an unintentional conflict. This is really to undo that conflict, so then we can have the conversation about short-term rentals separately.
Thank you, and I think we will have that conversation, so I appreciate the clarification.
Ms. Kenny?
Nothing to add, Ms. Raviyan answered the question, thank you.
Any further discussion on Amendment Number Two?
So, I just want to echo what you said about our military, or so many people who work in the government, foreign service could be sent off, because if we didn't change this, if you got sent off somewhere, your mother would have to move out of your ADU, because it wouldn't be owner-occupied. And so, we've got to change this, so when you build your house, your mother can stay there, in the guest house.
That's, well, she would be upset.
She would be upset if you got sent off to, you know, Germany, and she had to move out of her home. So, this allows for that flexibility for so many of our kind of transient people. So, thinking of you on this one, Pete.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan?
Aye.
Ms. Leadbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Volke?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent, Amendment Number Two has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three. This amendment removes the authorization to use the property as a whole for short-term rentals, and substitutes a provision to allow the short-term rental of the principal, single-family dwelling or accessory dwelling unit if the principal, single-family dwelling or accessory dwelling unit is owner-occupied.
Madam?
Thank you. I would actually like to withdraw this amendment for right now, and bring it back possibly after further discussion with my colleagues, in this form or another form.
Okay.
And that's all we need to do, right? Just to, I just say I withdraw it. Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, that means a bill, no further amendments that I'm aware of. That means Bill Number 623 will be heard at our next council meeting, and I think...
March 6.
March 6? Okay, I'm sorry about that, yeah, March 6. All right, is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
Thank you. Anarundel County Animal Care and Control recently shared on social media that they are at capacity. If you have it in your heart and home to be a foster for any of the dogs, cats, and other furry animals, it will save a life of a future fluffy friend for a family in Anarundel County, so please reach out to Animal County Animal Care and Control and offer your support. That's all.
Ms. Fiedler, quick question, and maybe, this is probably wrong, the adoption fees and stuff like that, didn't we waive that like a couple years ago?
Yeah, there are periods of time where the adoption fees are waived. I believe that may be taking place right now due to the capacity issue, but I can't say that for certain.
Okay.
And they will work with families who have an existing pet to figure out the configuration in your home if you're interested, but don't know how to navigate that.
Sure. Mr. Barron?
I was just going to say, I'm not sure, but I'll confirm whether the fees have been waived or not.
Understood.
I just wanted to add, I remember reading that they're particularly looking for fosters for large breed dogs, is a challenge that I read that they were of most need for, so just wanted to highlight that. Thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Fiedler.
Well, when I build my ADU, I'll have a capacity for that additional, if there are no more business. So, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The county council is adjourned until 7:00 PM on March 6, 2023.
And happy...